April 26 regular board session.
Let's call this regular meeting of Marion County Ordinance Supervisors to order. Mr. Randia.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Amy Cohen.
Here.
Very good. Is there a motion on this morning's agenda?
I make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Good. Communications, Jake, anything received by your office?
Not to the board.
All right, very good. Board members?
No, none.
No, nothing for me.
Received none, good, all right. On the public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Renee, anything online? And nothing in the room? We'll move on. Very good. I entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good. On to business. All right. First, really the first three items are all related, but we'll... Actually, the first one, two, three, four, five items are all related. Just see, you're going to be on the hot seat for a while this morning. First item is we have to untable our discussion on Marion County Ordinance 2022-1, which is our second reading.
It's our third second reading.
Pardon that?
It's the third second reading.
The third, well, third time we've gotten on the second reading, so... So we have to untable that and then have a discussion and decide if we're going to approve the second reading before we move on to the next item.
I think you want to add that I forwarded you guys an email from Mr. Pat Ryan yesterday afternoon.
Okay. Did you all see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Was he part of the discussion?
Yes, he's been part of the discussion through the process. He's attended a couple of meetings online. He is here in person today, so...
Okay, well, so let's do the first action, which is to untable this so we can talk about it. Is there a motion?
I make motion to untable ordinance 2022-1.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. All right, item number two is discussion of the item we just untabled. Missy.
So we've been working on this project, which was only commissioned in January. And in February, the first reading, or, I'm sorry, did the first reading... And the second reading came forward to you the end of February, so it would have been the first of February, the first reading. During that timeframe, it was brought to our attention of two things, that one of the neighbors had not received her notification due to not updating her records in the assessor's office. So when she forwarded her mail for the winter, she didn't get her mail. But the reason it was untabled was it came forward that through operations, Mr. Linger had kept some of the cars that we had been, understood that had been removed. So at that point, we did do some, we've done some amendments, several conditions to the rezoning, which have been outlined to you. And we would have ended again at the last second reading to amend the south property line 200 feet from the neighboring property. So we've tried to keep it within Mr. Linger's, Mr. Linger's property surround this property because it is to the northwest corner, which is the point where it is abutting at the corner, Mr. Ryan's southeast corner. So we have written in several conditions. I know there's been question of, since we were made aware of the cars and the cleanup, why we didn't require cleanup prior to the rezoning. It was the direction of our council that we cannot require cleanup until and if the rezoning takes place. If the rezoning would take place, then obviously we can force cleanup. But during this process, we now have to move forward with as-is. That's why in the rezoning, several conditions have been written in. And most of the conditions are either screening or enforcement. So probably one of the strongest conditions written in is that if car, and I know it's one of the big concerns, if cars are found outside the rezoned area, that after the third offense of them outside the rezoned area, the screening would be required, an entire six-foot fence around the entire rezoning. So...
Okay. Very good. Missy, thank you. Thank you for keeping track of all the changes and things that have been going on during this. A couple of things for everybody to understand. I know there's been a big concern, especially among the neighbors, about enforcement of the zoning. Well, until we actually pass zoning, we have nothing we can enforce. So we have to get through the rest of this process, which is the second reading, the third reading, and then approval of all the different plans. And then we have something we can actually enforce, something we can take action on. So a real critical part of this, Missy, is have we reached, with all the conditions that are in here, it's in all the board packets, have we reached a place where both the landowners, who are going through the rezoning, and the neighbors have the things in there that they need to be at least semi-comfortable? We'll never make everybody 100% satisfied, but semi-comfortable with where we're at so we can go forward and rezone.
With the conditions that we've written in, Mark, we've written in several conditions of where there was discussion of, and trying to take into account the neighbors' concerns, comments, to come up with a reasonable, I guess, conclusion for everyone. Because part of my job, part of your job as a board is to make this, see if there's a workable solution for both the neighbors and the property owner. We can't say one person's property is more important than somebody else's, and everybody has a different use for their property, so...
Well, then I want to stop right there, Missy. You just raised a very critical point that we all need to keep in mind. We want people to be able to have full enjoyment of their property. And we want the folks that have the business there to be able to function and have their business be a viable entity. And we have to respect both of those interests and try to balance those things to the best of our ability. I think we've done that. I think you've gone through that process. I think the folks have gone through that process who neighbor the property and the business owners. So are we to a place where we can wrap this up now?
I feel like...
Because we can't put something that's an undue burden on the business that essentially shuts the business down. Because that would be unfair and unreasonable. That's not what your board's concluded. So we can't add that in our process. So are we to a place where we can go forward with this?
I feel like we are to a point where we have written in enough conditions for screening, for enforcement, that either the board is comfortable moving forward, or...
Or not.
We deny. I mean, we're to a point where this is one of those uses that everybody refers to as a NMB, not in my backyard. And I understand. That's why we've enforced and imposed screenings. And screenings in this situation are a part, because they will be a part of the enforcement. They're a part of the condition of the rezoning. So they will not go forward to the Board of Adjustment. They are a part of the condition, if you're to approve it, as to the rezoning.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Board questions for Missy?
Yeah, I have a question. What is the process of enforcement, Missy? If the landowner were not to meet the requirements of the rezoning, would the process, you know, if there's a fine, they'll say, "Well, I'm not going to pay the fine."
It's up to $750 a day per occurrence, which is per car, first events.
I know, but if we don't receive the fines, the money of the fines, would it then go against their taxes? I'm just curious.
That is a question for legal.
Ed, Ed, are you on?
Ed is on. Ed is a conference.
Well, that's right. He's at a conference.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's aware of what the enforcement is going to be if it doesn't, if there's no components.
I mean, the number one step in our enforcement is we receive written complaint from someone. We don't take anonymous complaints. We receive a written complaint, whether that's email or in writing. Or soon, I'm going to have the complaint form online, so they can be filed online. So that's the first step of the complaint. I have talked with Ben and Amy. And there are, as you can see, there's conditions set on the timeframe that wants, and if this rezoning is approved, that the cars have to be moved to the rezoned area. And he has consented and said he would sign a consent to allow us to fly a drone to verify that all of those cars are within the said rezoned area.
And Missy, in regards to survey, that...
And they'll, yep, they'll be required to get a survey once, and again, if this is approved, they'll be required, I think we set it at a 60-day timeframe, to get a survey so that they can set the posts and get the screening up. So that is, so that's also spelled out in the rezoning.
Very good. Steve, Keisha, any additional questions for Missy?
No, I just want, I just want everybody to be aware of what kind of service about the enforcement part of it. So if I'm to agree this, you know, I think the enforcement is a key piece to this.
Well, and it is, Steve, and that's, there's two elements to that that we've always struggled with with enforcement. Number one, Missy pointed it out, the complaints have to be written.
Correct.
Very, it is not infrequent for us to get anonymous complaints. We can't act on those. Not a legal thing we can do on anonymous complaint. So that triggers it. And once that happens, then there's a step, there's a process we have to follow legally after that. So just keep that in mind, Steve, to that point. It's not just the fine side. It's also, you got to put your name on something written, writing. Okay, very good. Anything else, Missy? All right, very good. Then I would entertain a motion on the second reading of ordinance 2022-1.
I'll make a motion. We approve the second reading of ordinance 2022-1.
I will second that.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Jake, we're on the third reading of the same discussion items, so I don't know if there's anything we need to add to this other than to say, is there a motion to approve the third reading?
I would...
This would authorize publication.
I would just like to say on behalf of Mr. Linger, I, we do not want to stifle economic growth, but also know that your business is going to be, you know, people are going to be looking. And so, you know, this is something that I know that Missy has been working very diligent with you. And so I would appreciate that, you know, we want this to be such a thing that it doesn't come back to us.
I hear you. I understand.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
I also appreciate the concessions you've made so far. I know in our last meeting, you know, with some people, we were kind of hung up on footage. And I remember when I asked you guys, "Don't worry about the footage. Go see what works." I think you guys did that.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that.
I would add that the conditions that I have been posted on the website and the condition I sent to you, I sent to Amy and Ben, so they're aware of all the conditions as they're spelled out. And it's already presented to you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the third reading, which would final approval of amending the zoning map, authorization of final publication, ordinance 2022-1?
I move we approve the third reading of ordinance 2022-1.
I'll second. Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Missy, we have site plan.
So this would be the commissioning area where there should not be salvage stored. There is required to be a 150 by 100-foot, six-foot screening west of the building so as to contain that and block from the neighboring view. I know one comment has been about the access driveway from the decommissioning to the salvage area that was purposely not included so that there could not be salvage behind a neighboring property. There is too, as written in the conditions, to at no time be salvage stored on that road for any reason. That would be against the conditions written into the rezoning. There's not to be, I mean, at this time, there's no other buildings proposed. So they have the one building that's 30 by 115. There is parking there to the south. Obviously, I would urge Mr. Linger, all those cars that are there, apparently that we're seeing, those would need to be, they're going to be kept. And I know we've kind of been in the transition state. They need to be taken to the salvage area, or they need to be crushed. I'll move to the next slide. I'll go back. So I think you guys in your packet have the full site plan. And so a couple of other things, obviously, this is a shared driveway. If you see the parcel in front, it's also Mr. Linger's, which was left A1 to be as a buffer. There was no viable access directly to this parcel. So this is, that was one of the reasons that we allowed the shared driveway. The second is that this was a parcel and a building of record before the ordinance changed. So we are allowing the shared driveway. He will be paving within the right-of-way as to the requirements set forth by the county engineer and his staff to keep the mud and gravel from the driveway to a minimum. So then on, if we look at the salvage containment area on the west side between the trees, once it's surveyed, there'll be a requirement for the six-foot non-transparent fence to block any use of the cars. Again, as specified, there's never to be cars higher than that fence. So that's also a violation. The, as agreed upon on the south fence line, that's what we refer to as a standard animal-type fence. And the proposal, after talking with Marion County Conservation Staff, is cedar trees to be used as a screening. That was one of the requests of the south, the neighbor to the south, they wanted tree screening versus fence screening. Cedar trees are resistant to animals. They're, they grow well in soils that aren't all that great. And they seed themselves, and, you know, within a few years, are probably going to fill in that 200 feet. So on the east side, Mr. Linger owns the 10 acres to the east of that. That's just to be a standard animal-type fence used to contain the salvage to the designated area. The yellow dots that are shown are to be post-set after the survey's done. I would say a standard quarter post with the yellow on the top so that they can easily, the rezoned area can be documented. But again, note that if at any time, after the third offense, cars outside the rezoned area as a condition of the rezoning, the entire thing has to be screened with six-foot fence. So...
Okay.
I think as far as subtake, there's a current subtake. That meant all the requirements. I have the documentation from the Sanitarian and...
All right, very good. Board, any questions for Missy on the site plan?
No, I don't.
Steve?
No, I think that was already agreed upon.
If no questions, no discussion, is there a motion?
I would add that in June, so the other property that, and one of the things behind this is the property that Mr. Linger owns at 1558. The, he's signing consent. We will go to the Board of Adjustments. That property will no longer house salvage and will be a sale. It's owned commercial. So it will be a sales lot only with up to 12 cars for sale. There should not be salvage at that lot once that amendment's done.
Very good. Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion on the site plan?
Make motion to approve the site plan for CJ Auto Salvage, 1596 Highway T-15.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
Combs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Missy, thank you for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Missy.
To all the folks involved, thank you for your work together to get to this point. Very good. We have a site plan now for LDJ Properties, which I'm talking about. Brands off of 163. Tyler, working with them on getting access, and where are we at with that? Is this you, Missy?
Yep.
Oh!
Yep, so this is, this is a site plan that's in conjunction...
You're still here. Oh, sorry, Tyler, just stay seated.
This site plan is in conjunction with the Rice Grant. I believe that the Rice Grant and the expansion are somewhat tied together. So this is a 25,000-square-foot expansion on the north end of the current LDJ facility. It's right at the 25% threshold where Marion County requires site plan review as well as it's being the size. An over 10,000 square feet is when Marion County requires or recommends that we do detention calculations, which are on record from garden associates. So with that, with this expansion, the current buildings and the current concrete, there's about five acres of impervious surface that they are addressing the detention with the detention calculations. The yellow up there is the expansion. I'm going to let Chad explain how they currently are doing the detention. They've got it tied into their current detention pond and some field tiles, or Lauren, either one of you?
So currently, as we've been starting on this project, we have existing detention on the northeast corner of the property, just outside of the gray shaded area. So that was previously designed for some of the concrete we already have. So first step of the process, we look in this project, we engaged in garden and associates and made sure that we looked over the gray shaded areas, new additional concrete, the roof capturing of what we have for our building that we are looking to put up, as well as calculating the what-ifs of down the road. If I were to add another facility, which is kind of in dotted lines there, they put together the calculations of what our retention would need modified to capture, retain all that. So on the northeast side, we would be modifying and adding a little bit of size to the current retention. It's got two six-inch tiles that would drain through that is part of our north property that Lauren owns under his trust. So it'd be captured there. It would go underneath and then basically watered out through those tiles before it hits the neighboring property. And then also, so the line area right there north of the gray is very, would be modifying. And then there would be an overflow on the east side of that, on the right side of the photo, that would then overflowing, get captured in another terrace if we ever did have a large extensive right. So the current site plan, we are probably only going to use about 50% of the capacity of retention that we placed there as we built it to handle potential future expansion in the term.
Very good. Questions?
Yep. So Lauren, do you guys own, I mean, all the way back, I mean, how much do you own north of you then? And then who's on the neighboring sides?
We own 100 acres.
Okay.
So right next to us is the Wittenberg Trust.
Okay.
To the east of us. And the drainage does end up in their pasture. In addition, heads down the thunder creeks. So that has been in place for a lot of years. So actually, we start off in Containment 1. And then if that would, for some reason, overflow, we have a five-inch drain. It would go in Containment 2, and then it could possibly go into Containment 3.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
So we just did this years ago. Board was required because it's a good thing to do.
Right.
So that's how it's set up right now.
Okay.
And Chad's talking about enlarging Containment 1. We'll make it deeper and a little wider. It's just a matter of moving dirt, so...
So the current site that's in the name of LDJ is 17 acres because there was originally two parcels there until they built on the 10-acre tract. And that's just been combined in the auditor's office. So it's currently 17 acres. So the setbacks are 80 feet to the back property line, which exceeds the required to the Lauren Van White Trust. To the Wittenberg property, it's 247 feet. And then to the west property line, which is also Lauren Van White Trust, is 380 feet. Parking, they've exceeded all the parking. The parking is based on the number of employees. And they currently have, I believe, 27 time-created parking spots and close to like 60 gravel. They're, based on the number of employees, they're required to have 35. So they will exceed, and I know they use some of that parking for their machines that are waiting for delivery.
Thank you, Missy. Board, any questions on the proposed site plan?
I don't have any further questions.
Steve?
Well, it appears to me you've done any due diligence on the retention pond.
Very good. Is there a motion on this proposed site plan?
Oh, I would add that I do have documentation. They're working with, they're working with Bridget and I'll be working with Cameron on updating subtake.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Missy. Very good.
Make motion to approve the site plan of LDJ Properties.
I'll second that. I'm going to get at least two seconds every day.
Yeah.
It's going to happen. Wait till I, wait till I do the motion.
I did think about it for a second. McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Missy.
Thank you.
She's still up there.
Yeah, one more.
Oh, zoning commission?
Yes, so...
Okay, it would be you. All right.
Yes, it would. We have recently, due to health issues, had our, probably our longest time zoning commission member, Alan Turbster, had served since 1993, due to some health issues. He, and he's been the zoning commission chair since I started 21 years ago.
Wow.
So sadly enough, with health issues, he's decided it's time to step back, take care of himself. And so we have, I've reached out to Leslie Miller, who has a great background, of course, in banking recently. In the last couple of years, retired from Marion County Bank. I've worked with her on several occasions with different real estate. So she has a great understanding, as you can see from her application. She's been on the school board, been on several boards, and I think will be a great asset to Marion County. Her term would, unfortunately, we just appointed Alan in December. So her term is a five-year term. She'll be taking over a five-year term for now, just for the name for Alan.
Okay, very good. Board, any questions?
I just would say that, A, thank you to Alan. If you said he's been here with you for 21 years, how many years had he been?
1993.
Wow, okay, yeah.
That's when he became...
So, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's impressive. Bless his heart, you know, we appreciate that. Bless his heart, you know, we appreciate that.
We lost a lot of knowledge, which, you know, we have, we have a lot of other good numbers, but yeah, yeah, it's a.
Know Leslie, know her both professionally and personally, and yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
So again, thank you, Alan, for your service. It's hard to get people to do these, and these are volunteer positions.
Yeah.
So we definitely appreciate it when people step up and do this, and fill these important roles. With that, is there a motion to approve Leslie to fill this vacant term ending 12/31/2026?
I'll make the motion to approve Leslie Miller for the zoning commission.
Second.
Ray.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
MacCombs.
Hi.
Very good. Missy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Almost said you're up for the next one.
I was gonna say, I'll let her do it, she wants to.
Next, we have a request from the Knoxville Senior Center to discuss the Travis Trust. Mike Roberts, thank you for coming this morning.
Good morning. I brought Martha along too, so I'm sure there can be some questions on numbers, and she does the day to day operations for us, so I'm just kind of the every other month filling president of the board. So as mentioned in my letter, I also serve on the Aging Resources Advisory Committee. Earlier this year, we held our annual grant application process meeting, if you will, and divvied up all the funds amongst all the applicants. We had asked for considerably more this year, as our meal count, I believe, is somewhere between 75 and 80 meals a day. Increased a lot during the last few years courtesy of COVID. With that said, however, as you know, Mark, even on this committee before, you have to have matching funds with it, and unfortunately, fell short of matching funds as of late because of the pandemic, and grants have come in, but not like they were in 2019. Over the process, we have finally received the award letter of $79,500 from Aging Resources, which we were able to match. But in the future, we need to elevate our budget for a couple reasons. One, cost of food is getting out of hand, as you know. Transportation adds to that as well. And we have to increase our staff. We have leaned on Martha and Marcia for the last three and a half years, is that right? Four years? Whatever it was, you retired. So, but with that said also, we've had some volunteers through National Able. That group has ended our National Able program, and they don't have anybody to replace because, like other employees and employers, they're having trouble hiring, if you will. So we've had to go out and hire staff to fill in as well. So that's increased our costs as well. As mentioned before in the past, the Travis Trust, we've had conversations about that before, and best ways of dealing with that and doing that. And I think I've come up with a pretty good plan to divvy up that money over the next five years. I talked to Jake a few weeks ago, and I think he told me it was 153,000 round numbers. So if we could divvy that up over the next five years, the supervisors would be able to allot that at $30,000 in the final year of the reigning. That would help us match increasing numbers for Aging Resources.
Appreciate it, Mike, thank you. Thank you very much. Board, questions for Mike or anybody associated with Knoxville Senior Center?
Mike, those 75 to 80 meals, do you say that's a day?
That's per day.
Now, that, does that include home delivery meals and in, in the building itself?
Since COVID, we've been nothing but home delivery. They shut us down back in, I think it was early April of 2020. We've had the opportunity to open up a couple times. One, our staff came down with COVID, so we had a really bad mess last winter of that. And the other time is, it started, the Omicron variant started increasing, so we held back. We are officially gonna open up 400 meals this coming Monday, first time since 2020. If you go with averages on that, in the past, Martha, I'm gonna defer to you on this answer, what's our average congregate meal when we close?
Roughly 17 to 20.
That would show up in person, then?
Right, so 17 to 20, so that leaves around 55 to 60 home delivery still, all in the city limits in Knoxville.
What, what do you think the chances, you know, if you were to get $30,000 each year, what are the chances, and what would that amount be from Aging Resources?
Don't match up to what we have, but the chances all depend, again, on federal funding as well, so whatever is handed down from the government.
Have you ever been, have you guys given thought to kind of like how we do that, is to outsource the meals rather than have to cook them on site, or?
We haven't as of yet, I'm not saying that won't come in the future, but right now, the onsite congregate thing is what we're going back after, again, the socialization part of it. We've literally had people begging us for the last six to eight months to open back up again for congregate.
My question, my question, whether to outsource the meals, you can bring them to the site rather than have to cook them on site?
Yeah, we, we haven't looked at that as far as.
Which may decrease your overall cost, you know, that's just something to think about.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, we haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
Do you know, I mean, and maybe this is a Martha question, you like, your cost per client, I mean, what have you, what are you seeing for the increase for the last, you know, couple of years? I mean.
As far as the cost per meal? It's actually been going down.
Okay.
It varied anywhere from as much as $9.72 per meal to roughly $7.26 per meal now.
Okay.
The biggest thing going up is meat cost.
Yeah.
So, Steve, you kind of answered your question a little bit more in detail too, I'm not having a chance to look at that. Again, we just kind of had our hands tied with the home delivery thing. I'm not saying we won't look at that in the future, I mean, you never say never. It's definitely something to look at.
The only reason I say that, I don't know how, you know, how, how sustainable, how loud we can be with 153,000 loads that runs out sooner or later.
Right. Definitely in fire your plan, we got some other things going as well. The other thing we've added to that, on outsourcing, is we have to make sure that Aging Resources recognizes the meal too, which I don't have the answers to that either right now.
Mike, just to dovetail off of what Steve is saying, is there any coordination with the city of Knoxville on this? Because to Steve's point, this money, and you and I have talked about this, this money will run out.
Right.
It's been sitting for a number of years. 1987, Michaela?
At least since I've been here.
Yeah.
And that's 2000.
So it's been sitting, just kind of losing value as, as the federal government prints money, so if we, if we authorize any distribution, and Jake, we did authorize one during COVID, right? We gave a small distribution.
There has been some distribution, I do not recall.
It was, it was 10,000.
About 10,000, I think. So, so to do that, eventually this funding stream will run out too. Mike, what, what's the plan with the city? Has there been any discussion?
I actually met with Heather last week to start wheels in motion, if you will, about this. She instantly went to possibly the new public safety building, talking about putting a community room to continue our free rent, if you will, but that's a long ways out. The biggest problem with that is they can't even start talking about their own building until 2024, because they're planning on using that local option sales tax renewal that's coming up in 2024. As far as funding itself, no, there hasn't been any conversation.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, I get, I get that food costs have gone up. I know this from our standpoint, as a business owner, and they're gonna continue to go up. So that's a constraint we're facing across a lot of our service platforms. I think Kim has dealt with that on our, on our side of senior nutrition, where we use the mom's meals, and that's going very well, isn't it?
It is, it is, and I, I just have, Missy, figure the cost per meal right now. And so right now, we are at 8.52 per meal.
Okay.
So we're in the same ballpark.
Right, in that same range, okay. Very good. And I do appreciate the, the balance sheet here.
Absolutely.
And providing that with your expense, expense listing as well, so. So board, it really comes down to, in, in looking at the trust, again, I think we've looked at this in my 10 years on the board a number of times. I did have some conversations with Ed before he left. We've definitely gone past the 10 year requirement that's written into the trust, so it's now really up to the board supervisors to determine the disposition of these dollars as the trustee, and how we would like these dollars deployed, so discussion.
When you look at the, the language of the trust, I mean, to me, it's pretty obvious what the intention.
Sure. Yeah, it's stated, stated right in there.
And yeah, and I agree.
It's for the benefit of Knoxville seniors over age 65, it's for these types of services, that's what it's for.
Personally, I understand, and I, I appreciate you coming and asking, and, and like Steve said, I personally would think, I would feel a little bit better if we did maybe just one year at the 30,000, see how it goes, see what you can get from Aging Resources, and then come back and then revisit it and see where we can go. That would be, that would be me, but.
Well, you, what you're saying, Keisha, is you'd just like it to be renewal, just something we review every year.
Yep, yep.
And I, I have no problem with that, I got nothing to give a problem with that.
Nor do I.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great idea, to make that something we just review every year. How, how do you feel about the amounts? Steve?
Well, I, I'm fine with that, like Mike says, you never know what Aging Resources, you never know what that funding's gonna be in the future, but, you know, if it helps, if it helps get more, more funding from them, with that money sitting there that they look at as an incoming match, whatever, how they look at it, I, I don't have a problem with that, no, no.
My, my, and my compliments to you folks, I mean, we made an arrangement, Kim, what has this been, that we decoupled? Five years ago?
19.
Yeah.
19.
Okay, so not quite five years ago that we decided that Knoxville would take care of their senior nutrition needs, we would take care of the incorporated, unincorporated areas. You folks have been doing a job. And the reason I ask about the city, Mike, is just to know if they've reached out to you, because this is an important part of your population, there should be some type of coordinated plan, I would think, with the city. This is not a county deal, this is a municipal, this is a city Knoxville deal. So you guys are doing what you can to, to assist these residents.
And hopefully this gives the city some time to be thinking, you know, what the future is, and you guys can work together.
The meeting we had the other day, we're like in the first baby step of 10,000 baby steps to get there.
Sure.
At least they know what our intentions are and what we hope they can work with us on.
So, so I do not have a problem with dispersing the 30,000. I think the annual review is important, and we should do that, so it'll be subject to that for any future disbursements.
I think, well, I said a lot of the same with this trust, even if we, if the county was to administer, you know, I mean, we still gotta use it for the same purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
And it kind of just takes us out of the administrative side of it.
Right. Well, the review process will be our check.
Yes. And I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, very good. So if we're all in agreement, is there a motion to approve a $30,000 disbursement? And we'll just do it for this year, to Knoxville Senior, Steve, what's your official name?
Knoxville Senior Center.
Yep.
Knoxville Senior Center, and to be reviewed on an annual basis.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
MacCombs.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Mr. Craig Egan, welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning, supervisor. As you know, I've served at your pleasure for the past four years or so since I've been off the board, I served on the board during the time I was on there, so my total is about 12 years with the Central Iowa Regional Housing Authority. The group that handles the HUD funds for a six county area, actually within Marion County, because Knoxville has their own housing authority, we don't do as much as in the other five counties, but it's a large authority, and I feel we have a, a very good staff that does a great job. My, again, for, it's my, my responsibility for regular reporting to you. I'm a bit later than I should have been, it seemed like we were running into suspensions at the end of the year, I've been talking to Jake about good timing, and you guys have got into, in a budget time, which is always very busy for everyone. But there's been no earth shattering things with Central Iowa Regional Housing, it's kind of been business as usual. We have a good authority, well run, good staff, our audits always come back sound. Things are just, things are going well with, with this group. We do work typical of most boards, we oversee budget, we help the secretary, I mean, sometimes we weigh in on personnel situations and staffing, of course. As an example of some of the things in the last meeting, which was a week ago, our monthly meetings, we awarded, or approved $165,000 to go to renovate the kitchens in 20 owned facilities in Perry, Iowa, which, you know, most, it's both using the voucher system and some owned facilities, which we do own some in Melcher, Dallas, so facilities there. As I say, I, I feel we're a very good organization and do have good staff, I think we operate efficiently, using the, you know, dispersing the federal HUD Housing Urban Development money. We're, she would be above average in, in that type of thing. The papers I left with Jake to offer to you there are something I've talked about authorities, because I thought you might find it very interesting. A thing we, we felt unfair for a long time is affordability that goes along with these vouchers, and it's, it's the thing that you can move into our area.
We don't have that up there, I was, I was hoping maybe we could show the public what that looked like, so we probably don't have that, no, okay.
The people seeking vouchers, because in other areas in authorities which I feel are not as well run and oversight, people come into our area, and our year, we have an annual, or yearly, excuse me, wait, and after they've done that, they can receive a voucher then, and, and can immediately leave with that voucher and go back to where they come from or where they'd like to go to and use that voucher, and we retain responsibility for paying for those amounts. As the current list, which I gave you a copy of there, and I've shared these with you before, the most egregious one is at the top, for the housing authority of Snohomish, Washington, of $2,750. Our average is about $450, which we put out with the vouchers, so if 2,750 goes to Washington State, and, and this particular one is actually to someone who is purchasing a home, and we are reimbursing that, that's equal to, you know, more than five times families that we could care for within the state of Iowa. This has been brought up to our national senators' representatives before, and they have looked into it, they get pushback from other areas because some of the more, you know, the bigger urban areas kind of like the fact that our money can, part of our money can come to them. Well, there has been some action, it's taken a while, and we don't know yet if this will be, if, if they have any luck getting this passed in Congress, but the Rural Housing Accessibility Act is another sheet that I gave you there, has been put forward by Senators Ernst and Grassley to make some changes to this, and basically in a nutshell, it's the idea of when someone does get a voucher like that and they do move, they only have one year, and then the local housing authority has to start picking up that out of their funds and will continually come back to whatever authority is in, in the state of Iowa.
How normal would that process ever be allowed to begin with? I, I, that's totally ludicrous.
It seems that, it definitely seems that, but again, it's a federal government and, you know, you can see where it's.
Enough said right there.
Well, you can see where it could be of value and the right thing to do in some cases, but it's obviously been abused, and, and now it's a fact that it's just well known that people will move in and apply for a voucher and wait the one year. I mean, they'll come and establish residency just for the purpose of getting this voucher and then go to where they want to go.
So Craig, I have a question for that.
Yeah, Keisha.
And I, A, appreciate you serving on this board, thank you, that was a board that, you know, I think I would have been on, but you weren't willing to serve, so thank you. When you list these eight, is that for this area?
Yes, that's, that's just for our housing authority, of which I can even tell from my head how many authorities there are in the state, but that's for our six county.
Six county, okay.
Central Iowa area, yes.
So the, wow, and that's a, that's a month then, the $12,203?
Yeah, an annual expenditure out of our agency authorities' funds. Yeah, an annual expenditure out of our agency authorities' funds. Uh, again, could go for people within our area.
This is just crazy. This is just, and I'm sure people don't really even have any idea how that, you know.
One of the things that we don't know about is every citizen, what happens, it's just uh, I, you know. Not a good situation within the federal rules. But uh, so anyway, there's uh, you know, possibly some light at the end of the tunnel if uh, our senators can convince. The others in Congress that uh, this is more fair to move forward with that. Um, again, you know, summarizing other things, it's, it's going well with authority. I'm in my. I served on this during my time as supervisor and since then, so I'm in about twelve years or something like that. I'm. Serving for my third year, I guess, as uh, Vice Chair of this authority and um. Hopefully we're doing good work, helping the people that need help and trying to keep things moving forward. May I ask and answer any questions, if any other questions?
No, that's great. Thank you, Craig. Board, any other questions?
No, thank you for the update, Craig. I appreciate that.
Craig, thank you.
I appreciate you, you for doing this too, Craig.
Thanks, Steve, sure. Um, if I could make a very quick comment, I wanted, uh, I spent week before last in Southern Indiana and Ohio doing some personal. Genealogy ancestry research, and many of you know, very interested in that. I want to commend the board again for um, your uh. Good work overseeing the township trustee system and the other cemetery system within the county and especially. The Pioneer Cemetery Commission, which was established several years ago. Um, I ended up in uh, east of Cincinnati. Crooned through Briers and Brambles and so forth, and the boonies in the back of some privately owned property. To uh, find the grave of a, a fifth great grandfather mine who was a patriot. He was a soldier in the Revolutionary War and um. Came east of Kentucky after that and married and then north up to that area east of Cincinnati and spent his life there. And um, you know, I, I would like to see the deceased property respected and. They obviously don't have a system and even in the other cemeteries where weren't. Uh, a small private cemetery as this one was. I thought the care was really poor, so. Just, you know, I applaud what you've been doing and um, appreciate it.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service on this. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close discussion on this item?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second. McCombs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Very good. Now we have Resolution twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two dash forty-three, which is uh. FY twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three Property Tax Suspension. Michaela, Marion County Treasurer.
So, this came in here, there's a lot going on in the treasurer's office, um, going several different directions. Uh, we're getting ready to wrap up March twenty-twenty-two collections. Uh, we're preparing. For the twenty-twenty-two tax sale that'll happen the third Monday in June. And then we're also already looking forward to certifying taxes for next year and getting those statements ready. So, this is part of that process. Um. We do have one individual in Marion County who applied years ago, I believe two thousand and three. To have property taxes suspended based on the qualification through the Department of Human Services. Uh, that was granted at that time and then she continues to qualify each year to have the property taxes suspended. So, today is just the annual request to approve that suspension of property taxes. For this parcel listed for the twenty-two, twenty-three tax collection year.
That's good.
I know we've had this discussion before.
I can see this one coming. Go ahead, fire away.
Uh, in the event, when Mrs. or Ms. however, however that is, riding through this property. Then, when this property comes up for sale, the taxes are then due and payable or on suspension, which makes the property, the property. Wouldn't be available by, or the taxes would be.
Uh, taxes, correct. Taxes are not forgiven in this situation. They're merely suspended, so no back. Penalty interest or costs will be due at that time. However, the base amount collectible of the taxes will be due, which I believe. Right now stands at around twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not totally outside, but.
Correct.
In the, in the event that they get totally outside, let's, let's say, would, would whoever was in, on the board then, would they? Could they forgive all those bad taxes that tried to get that property sold, or how does that work?
I think in the event that a property would be upside down for property taxes. Um, I, I think we would have to look at the code at that time and hopefully seek legal counsel.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
It could happen.
But yeah, I'd see where he's going.
Stevie, there is a really good point. I don't, I don't, I don't know if you're headed down this road, but this is the road I would go down. You eventually get to the place where the property becomes something you can't put back on the rolls because nobody will buy it.
Right.
Because the taxes outweighed the, the actual cost of ground. So, you've effectively taken a piece of property and moved it all the way off the tax laws. That's a problem. And I, and you know, whatever the motivations are here. They obviously fit the statutory guidelines to be able to do it, but I think as a board, we have to think about. People doing that, or is this a way to effectively wall off your property from ever being sold? Uh, or having to sell it, and you don't pay your property tax.
Well, and I think at some point that will happen. Um, however, I have had other individuals approach me. Uh, that qualify and would like to explore doing this same process. However, that's the very reason many of them choose not to do it, is because they're under, under the understanding that taxes are forgiven and that's not the case.
Right.
They're merely suspended. So, if they don't have to take care of it, at some point, their heirs would have to take care of that, those taxes.
I just kind of wanted to throw that out there so the public that is listening knows that process.
Yeah, that's a great question. Any other questions for Michaela on this? Michaela, any concerns from your standpoint?
No.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve Resolution? Twenty-twenty-two dash forty-three?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-three?
I'll second.
Rainey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four, which is a resolution uh, to approve disbursements from the. American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Jake?
So, this is just a follow-up from your meetings last week. You discussed both um, this item and the next item regarding the allotments and. Uh, had a pretty good process in place with your prior, um, I think actually would be obligations for the ARPA minds, that's what we. Were agreeing, so this is completely.
Yeah, this is just formalizing it.
Yep.
Yeah, just formalizing it so that we've got the, the documentation from a compliance standpoint.
On the screen is the updated, uh, where you guys were at in your obligations. These are the projects. The projects that have been obligated by Resolution's date. It's worked out really well for us as we prepare to do this. Um. Actually Danny's been working on it really hard. Uh, the, uh, report is due at the end of this month. Um, so this helps us identify those projects that we're listing on that as well. So, I, I do appreciate the formal process for each obligation.
Yeah, I think that's important. Very good. Board, any discussion on these? We talked about this last meeting. This is just to formalize those decisions.
No, I think we pretty much talked it over last time.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four, which is the dispersment of ARPA funds for LEC camera and. Microphone and cell, uncell phone?
Yeah, it's, it's for the um, not, not cell phone, but it's for a, a cell in the locker.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, okay.
I, I don't have necessarily, I don't have any questions about this, but I just wondered, um. If we were to do this, and I forgot to ask this on, to read, is there any um, benefits for our insurance? Do we know of any sorts? Because being able to see, I was just thinking when, if we were to do this, and that was probably a question I should have asked Reed. De, uh, yeah, Reed Gaius when he was here the last time, just didn't know.
Would we get any, any credits on our insurance for the new cameras?
Yeah.
That we can ask.
Uh, we can ask. Um, we've been updating actually the, the coverage amounts just because. We just, we keep, you know, advancing in technology, but we, I can sure ask.
If we didn't have it, it would be a bad thing.
No, no.
So, it's probably more keeping your, your facility current than it is if you don't.
Yeah, hoping that we could, yeah, save some cost.
Did we have a motion on that, Steve? On twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four? Oh, let's try.
No, we don't.
We have it, yeah.
Okay, well, I will make that motion.
I will second.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi. And twenty-two, twenty-two dash forty-five uh, is ARPA dispersment uh, for health and EMA radios. Talked about this again at the last meeting. Are any additional discussion needed? Steve, any discussion?
Uh, will these radios be available for other usage?
Yes.
In the county? Okay. I have a question I was asked, so. I figured, I figured they would.
But housed here, housed in?
Yeah.
We currently have existing cash radios in my office that anybody can use.
Okay.
So, this is just a updating of that technology.
The availability of those, that you will make yourself available when, if those radios are needed?
Yes.
Okay.
Emily and I, one of the two of us is on call twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
If I can, uh, the sheriff can't be here, but his on the, his rebuttal for that is we're a twenty-four seven operation. So, I, I guess, and his theory is, is always accessible, will never close. Uh, if something happened, that, that can't be the right way. So, that, that's sort of our, our stances. We're the twenty-four seven operation, so if they were there, there is no worries of, of them trying to get here in time or, or anything of that and uh.
Yeah, Troy, and Troy, I appreciate that. Jason called me before the meeting and, and voiced that, so.
Okay.
Let's deal with getting the radios and I think right now we have a location, we can talk about those needs. That's, that's not. Where we put them is less important than we need to update the technology associated with it. So, let's do that part first. We'll deal with this operational stuff offline, so, but thank you for the comment. Is there a motion on this resolution?
I will approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-five?
I'll second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Hi.
Very good, thank you. And thank you, Jake, for putting these together. Appreciate it. All right, next, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-six. Which is, uh, I think I asked Lisa to bring this before the board. Uh, it's a renewal of our EAP program. So, Lisa?
Yes, so um, annually we look at our EAP program. Um, we. Um, get the renewal rates, the rates uh, as you see to go up slightly um, per person. Um, we do have a utilization rate, which means um, our employees. Families are using um, the EAP program. Um, our rate is about two point nine eight percent. And the average per company our size is three. So, that kind of shows that we're on target, that our people are using. The EAP program that we are providing. Um, this year you also see in your packet that they are offering um, some training sessions at a discount rate. Um, that we can take advantage of um, right now at renewal, so um. My recommendation would be to stay with the three sessions for the EAP. Uh, and then also take advantage of those training hours. Um, it'd be a thousand dollars for four hours. Um, of training. And I have, I have some, I have a list of some trainings that I would like to see in the future.
So, trainings held here type situation or where, within the county, okay?
Yep, they would come here, train our people um, on, on a variety of topics, but I have like a top three, top four. Um, subjects that I have picked out that I think we need training in.
Okay, very good. Any, any questions for Lisa? I think it's an important program.
Absolutely, absolutely, especially now.
Yeah.
Um, with the COVID, um, everybody has a lot on their plate. Um, we're going through and uh. Renewal right now, so we're reminding our employees that they have the three sessions. They can call, it's not just um, mental wellbeing, it's financial wellbeing, maybe you're caring for a parent. Um, there, there's a wide variety of issues that they can help you with.
Yeah, that's excellent. Gives our employees a third party outlet uh, to call and have those kinds of discussions with that they need, it's something that's very.
Absolutely. And we, the utilization rate, um, is all that we get. We don't get specific information. Um.
Which is important to let, yeah.
We just want to know that, that there are people there that are using it, um, and that, that's why we provide it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other questions for Lisa on this?
No, I think this is a great benefit for our employees.
Is there a motion on Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-six?
Yeah, make motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two.
Second that.
Forty-six.
Rainey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Lisa, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-seven, Resolution to approve uh, the ICAP Group Benefit Program. The twenty-eight E agreement, oh, it's, or ISAC, sorry.
Okay, this is just.
Wait, wait a minute. ISAC.
Yeah. This is a, a benefit that we have offered for over twenty years. It's. Um, it's strictly a voluntary um, AD and D coverage. Um, it goes back to twenty years and um. ISAC is wanting to update their agreement with us on this. Um, this is outside of what Holmes Murphy, what we bring to the table with the Holmes Murphy benefits.
I know this has been around for a while, Lisa, but is this ever something we would merge into our standard benefit plan?
And we can, it's, it's kind of one of those products that this was out there that we just kind of kept going on, so. Next year at renewal, we'll make a note, um, because this coverage. Um, is offered through the Hartford when you purchase life insurance now.
Yeah.
So, um, I would. Recommend maybe just doing one more year and then at renewal, we'll look at it next year and try to merge that. And get those employees moved over to a different product.
Yeah, I think that Lisa may do explore.
Exactly.
I mean, we can check pricing and all those things at the time of renewal.
It's employee paid.
Yep, it's one hundred percent employee paid.
This one is, okay.
Yeah, voluntary is, yeah.
Yeah, and it would be the same way if they moved into um, the Hartford.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so yeah, one more year, we'll check it at renewal and see if we can merge these programs, or at least see what the pricing is.
Sounds good.
Very good. Questions on this?
No.
Nope.
All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash forty-seven?
I'll second.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi, very good, thank you. Lisa, thank you. All right, next, discussion action item. Mr. Nestebi has. I think I asked Chris to take a look at this. Little background and I'll go ahead and give some of the background, but Lisa's involved. I think there's some other folks involved. We had a. Uh, we had an incident at the courthouse on our sidewalk on the brick. An individual on a scooter uh, uh, basically flipped over the handlebars of their scooter. And it was pretty, pretty, uh, it was a large claim. I think we're still working on that claim. Is that correct, Lisa? Or Jake, are we still working on that?
I, I assume so. I, I don't know that we have a specific claim against this yet.
Okay, but at a minimum, we know we've had other folks trip and fall on the bricks and as far as icing goes. Uh, it's been a hazard, so I asked Chris to take a look and see how much it would cost to uh, make that all over the sidewalk. Uh, and maybe eliminate some of that liability. So, Chris?
Yeah, so uh, you know, just purely from a facility standpoint. Yeah, so uh, you know, just purely from a facility standpoint, brick looks beautiful, okay? Nobody's gonna argue that the brick looks great. Maintaining the brick is horrible. Ice melt doesn't stick to it. It stays colder faster than concrete does, or stays colder longer. Uh, it is a constant battle. And then you have the ground moves every winter, every thaw, the ground moves all the time and brick gets uneven, which led directly to our incident. Uh, not the first incident we've had on the brick, uh, multiple incidents. So in a day and age where our responsibility is to keep everyone safe from certain aspects, and I'll I'll leave it at that, uh, my recommendation is to remove the brick. Um, if you look at the corner of Second, which would be the west side of the courthouse and East Robinson, which is the south side, uh by Bajios. Instead of having brick uh on the curb, the city chose to pour concrete and diet. That's my recommendation. So the half circles on the north, south, west side would be removed. Dyeed concrete would be put in their place, it'd be pinned to both sidewalks, so when things move, they'd move together. And then the east side parking lot, where we have our center rectangle of brick, would also be removed and poured in as dieted concrete. Uh, I can't do anything with the, you know, eighteen inches of curb around because that half belongs to the city. But we've had multiple incidents, um I recall just about every winter that I've been here for three, uh, we've had incidents where EMS has been called on that brick. So that's my recommendation, um I saw some bids, we're not talking about a massive outlay of money. Uh, but for our purposes, the three main quarters and then the east rectangle will be about thirty one thousand six hundred and twenty four dollars. That's removal of brick and then that is dyed concrete in its place. So we try our best to match that color, um not gonna have any designs in it. This is just for standard pourback and dyeing and removal of the brick.
Very good. Questions?
Just that little section that you walk to, I'm trying to think where we're at.
Southeast corner, is that where you're talking?
Yeah, the pathway.
Yeah, you can see it right there, you should.
You're on right.
You know, that that's not included in that, that's a very lightly traveled and as far as I'm concerned, when you have four potential ways to approach the courthouse, if you choose to take that path, which is quite decorative and I do like it, um and you trip and fall, you have four other avenues that you didn't have to be on red. So I believe we're doing our due diligence at that point. I get into more utilities, removing that brick, digging out, putting the sub base in. Uh, so I'm not even concerned about that kind of curvy sidewalk that is very lightly traveled in the first place.
I'm totally supportive of this, I mean, thirty one thousand dollars is probably a cheap price to pay for future for any future liability.
Yeah, I I I this claim that we were discussing is what kind of raised it in my mind, I hadn't paid much attention until Chris and Lisa told me how many we've had over three years. Where I I went, that's, that's a trend we don't want to have continue.
Right.
And so we need to make those access points as as safe as we can, we can never make them entirely risk free because nothing is, but this is a way we can mitigate some of that exposure. So I totally, I I absolutely support about it. So Chris, what do you need? From us, just an approval to move forward?
Approval to move forward with thirty one thousand six hundred and twenty four dollars.
Okay, is there a motion?
So.
I will second that.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Next. Oh, continuing uh continuity of government planning, Jeff?
Morning. Um, probably remember prior to COVID, we've had uh some conversations about uh completing our continuity of government plan that we had started. Um, obviously with the interruption for COVID, just now getting back to that. Um, but I don't feel that it's enough things changed during COVID that continuing to update that plan is is not in our best interest. Feel like it's probably in our best interest to just begin anew. There were so many changes and so many things that we we learned and realized um during COVID that could be done. But I feel like having an uh outside planning firm come in, facilitate the meetings um and present us with a plan at about four to five months down the road is is the best, the best uh choice at this point. I bring this to you now uh because it's in the follow up file, but also because the state has let us know just recently that in the next five years, we're gonna be required to do to develop some recovery support functions that we do not currently have now for economic recovery. There is four major pieces to that, housing, infrastructure, cultural and natural affairs, and health and social services. So I feel looking down the road, the next five years at that, having continuity of government plan to ensure that the critical operations can continue is is even more important. I believe Becky Appleford with JEO is on online with us.
Yes, hello, this is Becky Appleford at JEO.
Thanks for joining us, Becky. Do you have anything that you would like to, why don't you give the the board um some background on JEO and the services that you provide?
Absolutely, thank you, Jeff. Uh, I am a senior planner, hazard mitigation emergency planner at JEO. And our team, uh, we focus on hazard mitigation plans and also other emergency response and operation planning such as continuity of government planning. Uh, we've uh have great experience facilitating a planning process. That's ultimately what we do is facilitate, um re- ask the correct questions to garner that information that ultimately goes into your plan. Uh, and that's what we feel really passionate about is while we are planners and we understand the key elements that go into a document, ultimately, we design and facilitate a process to put the information that is most relevant to your county or to your communities within these plans, so that in an emergency situation, um they are relevant and specific to your county needs. Uh, we have worked with various um community sizes and and counties and various county departments developing continuity of government and continued operation planning documents and facilitated that process, so. Um, I, and directly to what Jeff um has expressed, um we're hearing from a lot of people that COVID have identified um additional um gaps in planning, uh where uh departments and counties and communities can be doing better to ensure that they're ready for the next red door situation. And and having a Cooper cog is is a great step um to ensure that you're ready for that situation. Um, I did provide a draft, um scope and timeline and fee to Jeff. And um I just want to make it clear that um the timeline and scope is open to um changes and particularly if it pertains to the timeline, uh we're flexible in that timeline, so. Um, whatever works best for you all and in terms of what departments are in need of a uh continuity of government planning document, uh we're open to that discussion.
Very good.
Thanks, Becky. Any questions?
Board, any questions?
I would stress that, reiterate what Becky said, that the scope is flexible, so to all of you elected officials, please take a look at at the scope and if we need to make adjustments, we can certainly do that. That this is to ensure that the corp- a lot of the corporate knowledge that exists with the leaders that we have now, um our future leaders can can draw upon that through this planning process and not lose, not have all that corporate knowledge, walk out the door when we've we've got some key leaders in 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 this um organization that in five years are probably gonna be retired out.
Right. Jeff, that is probably the most critical point of thing that can be made about this. Uh, COVID is not something any of us signed on to when we ran for office or came to work for Marion County Government. Nobody thought about what that would mean, um what that would mean, not just for us, but our relationships with other entities, whether they were local city entities, the state, or the federal government. But it just, it was a, it was a big bright light on the fact that we need to have a more comprehensive plan, a blueprint that future boards, future electeds, future employees can use, at least as a starting point. It doesn't mean that it's going to be something you you uh you follow verbatim because situations change. But to have something that you can start with is going to be very critical. We were, I believe, fortunate this time in that we had some people within Marion County Government that have had extensive risk management experience. Um, and so we were able to develop processes uh working with our city folks, uh they did a tremendous job um but also working with the state and with the with the federal government, so we were able to get through this process, but that doesn't mean that will always be the case, so we want to give our, whoever comes after us, something they can work with uh and and be able to handle those circumstances. The days of saying it can't happen here are over.
The only question I would have, are they used to working with counties? I didn't know where you got that.
Becky, I'll let you answer it, but I would say a hard yes to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the question.
Are you, Becky, are you um used to you working with counties? Have you, do you have you other, you know, use, other counties use this?
Um, yeah, yeah, I have.
And Keisha, uh additionally, we have an existing relationship with JEO. They wrote um and conducted the, facilitated the process for our last hazard mitigation plan five and a half years ago, um hopeful that they're going to be the contractor of choosing to do the next one, which we're currently working on, so. We we have an existing relationship with them, I highly recommend JEO, I recommended personally JEO to other counties.
So, and the second point to this, Jeff, is is also something we learned during COVID that I think we have to include in this. But before, so what I'm willing to do is, I think this is very important. But what I would want before we expend the money is I want a commitment from each of the elected officials that they must participate in this fully. And anybody who opts out, we won't spend the money because it's not worth it. And because you're elected officials, we're gonna respect that office and that you have an opportunity to uh be a part of this uh because as we saw during COVID, we needed that cooperation amongst all of our departments and all of our electeds. So this would be something that either we're all in it together or we don't do it at all. Because it doesn't, it doesn't serve us any purpose to spend taxpayer money if some of our largest elected say, I don't want to do it. Or I oppose it. Okay, fine, we just won't do it. And the next time it happens, if there's confusion, that'll be on you and your department. So I don't mean to talk like that, but that's, we we, this is something we're either all in it together or we're not in it at all.
I agree. I mean.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, um, I am fully on board and and actually greatly appreciative that you mentioned that. Um, unfortunately, we have worked with other jurisdictions where they have opted to move forward with this planning process. Um, but then in the thick of it, people were found to be too busy or didn't see the need and it didn't make us useful of a process for their departments because they weren't fully engaged and on board. So I am fully with you that as long as everyone is on board, we're on board with you and we will make this as great of a process and as long as um as possible if everyone is all in.
Well, I appreciate that. I just know, having done these in the business world, I've done a few of these uh in my career, that uh if you don't have all your departments uh as part of the process, they they don't, the they they don't work. Um, so we've got to have everybody involved.
I'm just trying to think how this works, I, uh, Jeff, so in a meeting when we, everybody sat down and and come up with some scenarios and then.
Yeah, JEO.
Of some type of emergency.
JEO will facilitate those meetings and and ask those questions to to generate that conversation. And obviously they can draw upon their experience from um writing other COOP cog plans.
So obviously the benefit, and I think you already said it, Mark, the benefit will be for future, well, we will, for us too, if it happens within our timeframe, but for for future uh government to have have that thought out ahead of time, say, okay, now if this happens, we do, we start here, A, B, C, D. Am I correct?
Correct.
In my understanding.
We talked about this.
You're absolutely, and and Steve, let's think of just some some of the things that came out of what we did with COVID. We have a, we have a PIO now, that came out of COVID. Um, we have a different process working through with Kim and Jeff and the board of supervisors now, that came out of COVID. So we did some things during that time that we need to actually get in writing.
Right.
Uh, we coordinated with the city mayors through Jeff's offices in a different way than we've ever done before. That came out of COVID, so there are things we did, I'd like to get in writing anyway, so people can say, well, this is what they did when this crisis happened. Maybe we should do the same thing.
And that's the purpose of the whole process.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a handle on making my head here.
So, Mark, do you think that we just need to not do an action necessarily and then have a discussion where all the department heads are here again, you know, because I know that we'd asked that the department, you know?
Yeah, I I would, I would suggest this, I'm I'm willing to approve, is Jeff, is this the total allotment, twenty eight thousand seven twenty five?
Correct.
So I'm willing to approve this pending agreement from all of our elected officials. And you get that in writing from everybody, Jeff, and then we go forward. But if we don't, we have to regroup.
Right.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, Keisha.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. So that's an inartful motion, Jake.
I was gonna say.
The motion would be, we uh, we are approving uh the allocation of twenty thousand seven hundred twenty five dollars for the development of a continuation of government plan pending the written agreement of all elected officials.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I was waiting for Jake to quit writing.
That was Johnner and McCombs, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
All right. We are VA update.
Hey, I I always love this time because I know we're at the end.
What?
I get to go back to the rest of my busy day. We've got a few things going on right now.
You do, you're the, you you are the, you are the penultimate act in this show, wow.
We we can't wait to hear your updates.
Well, you know, it's not a huge update and the reality of it is, is I don't know if anybody's been by lately, but you know, the boiler plant's gone.
Yep.
The chiller plant's gone, the houses, we finally got the the last, uh, I I swear every time we moved two feet in on one of those houses, we found old buried pipe wrapped in asbestos. So you notice it's like every week, we took four more feet off of one of those, that's been the running joke out there for the last month. But they're all down now.
Wow.
We didn't find any more asbestos, so we literally have the uh fire station garage left, which is what Vite is using for kind of their little lockable headquarters. Um, other than that, every other building is gone. So uh the Earthworks crew's been hard at it for two weeks. Uh, they start on the east side by Young's Park, they are gradually moving um to the west. Uh, they're not just regrading, they're also the primary uh in-ground infrastructure removal group as well. So the demo crew was taking down buildings and the underground infrastructure within, let's say, a twenty to thirty foot radius of each building. The Earthworks crew is now coming in with all that mapped infrastructure, they're pulling sewer lines out, old gas lines, storm sewer, electric, old data. And we had found a ton of old uh concrete encased data lakes. About eighteen inches in the ground, nobody knew they were there, uh in fact, there's no data cable in them, they're just, uh, it must have been put in with the potential for future expansion at one time, all encased in concrete. So the best part is, we can't get rid of it for free because there's steel pipe encased in it, but we're really making some great headway. Every day is another day closer to being done.
Yeah.
I'm actually really looking forward to that. I'm actually really looking forward to that. But we're, we're, we're doing well, it's, it's neat to see that we're basically down to the, the last little few steps of at least above ground stuff.
I'm impressed with the, especially with the weather they've had to deal with.
Right, yeah.
They have done an outstanding job.
And they're still on schedule?
Yep, still on schedule, you know, our goal was before May to have, so May one, our goal was all above ground structures removed and all basements removed. We're going to fall short of that goal. And, and the reality of it is, is to speak to Steve's point, it's only so much you can do digging in the mud, digging in the slot. There's only so much you can do when the grounds froze up. So the reality of it is, we're probably going to miss that deadline. Originally we had given them a thirty day extension due to weather. I think we're going to miss that deadline by maybe seven days, so.
That's impressive.
That still is really, yeah.
I would equally agree, so things are going very, very well.
Very good, well, Chris, again, appreciate your management of this. You've done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Our taxpayers owe a lot of gratitude to you for managing that so well. We're coming in under budget still?
Still.
Correct? Even with all of the changes and all the things that have been discovered and that's for a project of this magnitude, that is significant. So thank you for the time that it took to do this in addition to your other duties. Which they didn't go away, did they?
No, we just added a whole bunch to them with our.
I was just checking.
It'll slow down one day.
Keep thinking about it.
Very good, appreciate the update, thank you Chris, very much.
Thank you Chris.
All right, is there a motion to close discussion?
I make motion to close discussion.
Second.
John.
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ray.
Aye, very good, updates, Mr. McCombs?
Nah, I'm good.
And this is John.
I had PLO planning and zoning last night, have fifth judicial tomorrow and impact, I believe, on Thursday.
All right, nothing from me. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned, thank you.
All right, Jake, are you okay? About blew a wheel there pal.